The council was held in person on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. The purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice this meeting was posted on September 10th, 2024, at 2:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded, is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Councillors absent, none. Councillor Watsonfeld is joining us remotely. Councillor Hapworth presided. Councillor Varela moved to dispense with the reading of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. President Hapworth requests that everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councillor Harvey. Salem City Council honors this land as Namkeg, or fishing place, where generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with the indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. Public testimony is not a public hearing or question and answer period. Sign up must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, which each individual presenting testimony must abide. We have three people sign up today, so each will get the full three minutes. The first is Justin Woodier.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to stand up for my city's history and to urge you to vote against creating a task force to redesign the city's seal. If you vote for this task force tonight, you are voting to change the seal. Let's be clear about that. There's no way that the task force will design that the city's seal is fine and will just leave it alone. So you can't vote tonight saying, "I'm just voting to have the conversation." No. You're voting on whether or not to change the seal and change it for no reason. There's no racism in it. There's no bigotry of any kind. There's no embarrassing anachronistic attitudes. The opposite is true. It was then and is now an ecumenical symbol, a symbol of peaceful exploration, commerce, connections between people, globalism at its best. The seal celebrates history we are proud of, not the horrors of the witch trials, not the witch kitsch that goes along with it. This is the history which Salem should celebrate. Think of the courage of getting on a wooden ship and sailing around the world in the freezing cold, in the burning heat, at the mercy of storms and sickness. People lived and died on these ventures. The people of Salem were rightly proud of this, and we should remain so today. Of course, we could replace it with something else, and we could replace it 10 years from now and 10 years later. That's not the point of the city's seal. The seal was chosen at the establishment of our city. It's part of our history, in the same way that this building is part of our history. Should we tear this down and update it? Salem respects its history. That's what makes us who we are. Voting to change the seal is voting to efface part of our history for no reason. This quote, published by the Essex Institute in 1879, says it better than I could. "The seal of a city should be characteristic and unique so that it could not fitly be borne by any other city, for it is an enduring link between the past and the future." The seal of Salem fitly typifies and commemorates that enterprise that during the first half of this century gave Salem a peculiar distinction among the cities of the earth and carried the fame of her merchants as well as the flag of this nation into unknown seas. Our seal is part of our history. Please vote to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Myabi Shields. Sorry. Myabi's on Zoom. Michael Corley.
Hi, my name is Michael Corley. I'm here as an individual representing myself, 176 Lafayette Street. I'm here also to stand up for our city's history. So let's talk about the historical context. Our current seal, which was designed in 1839, depicts a Sumatran with their friendship in the background and the motto "To the Farthest Port of the East," which celebrates our city's spice trade heritage, which began in 1793. It's Captain Jonathan Carnage's sourced pepper from Sumatra. By 1831, this relationship had soured. Captain John Endicott attempted to sail to Sumatra. The native people did not allow him to land and ended up commandeering the friendship. Without congressional approval, President Andrew Jackson dispatched a ship with 250 American soldiers for revenge. Avenge in the friendship in Sumatra, this ship sailed into the harbor disguised as a Danish merchant ship, and then the carnage unfolded. While Americans only suffered two casualties, they caused the deaths of over 450 Sumatrans. Jackson's response to Congress was that there were no diplomatic proceedings because of the primitive state of Sumatra, so he immediately took this action. This was actually the first example of American military intervention in Asia. So the imagery of peace with a dove and an olive branch contrasts sharply with the violent history of that intervention, which, like I said, was the first instance of American military intervention in Asia. So as we evaluate the seal's future, we should also consider the complex history and ensure that if we come up with an updated symbol, it aligns with our current values of peace and inclusivity while still honoring our past. I've also emailed the council the historical records of these events for further review. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Up next is Myabi Shields on Zoom. See the name? Myabi, if you're on Zoom, could you please raise your hand? Okay, we'll move on. Hearings.
Request from Comcast to install conduits on Federal Street for service at 36 Federal Street.
Anyone appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium.
Good evening. Jay Flowelling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Lubin, Massachusetts. Would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition to place 395 feet of conduit and a 3x3 manhole for the purpose of providing service to number 36 Federal Street.
Any questions for representative from Comcast? Councillor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I do have a couple of questions just with regards to...
Go ahead, Councillor.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions just with regards to how long this project is estimated to take and the impact on the metered parking on that stretch of Federal Street there. I did see in the plans that there would be some bagging expected to be covering, and I know that they have not yet had to provide any plans to the city directly until after tonight's vote. So just would like to hear from the representative from Comcast on the impact on that immediate area.
The work should take about five days to complete, depending upon the hours that the permit dictates. We do also have a traffic plan that will take into consideration the parking and also the bagging of the meters.
Thank you. And will this affect use of the light at that intersection, either crossing or traffic?
I'm sorry?
There's a traffic light right there at that same intersection. Is it going to affect any of the flow of traffic through that intersection, either pedestrian or vehicular?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments in the council? Thank you. Anyone else appearing in favor in person here? I don't think there is anybody on Zoom who's appearing in favor. Please raise your hand, and we will allow you to speak. Seeing none, anyone appearing opposed in person in the council, please make your way to the podium. Seeing none, anyone on Zoom appearing opposed, please raise your hand and we'll allow you to speak. Seeing none, Councillor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that we close the public hearing by roll call vote.
Councillor Watsonfeld moves to close the public hearing by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
On the motion for Comcast, on the hearing for Comcast to install conduits on Federal Street in the order to close the public hearing, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. The hearing is closed. Councillor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I need further move that this be granted by roll call vote.
There, I'll give you more time, Eileen. Councillor Watsonfeld moves this be granted by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
On the motion for Comcast to install, on the hearing for Comcast to install conduits on Federal Street, the move to grant, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Thank you. Appointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Graham Markku for Bow Street to the City Asylum Conservation Commission with a term to expire July 8th, 2027.
Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that confirmation by roll call vote.
Councillor Harvey moves for confirmation by roll call vote. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Yeah, we had that issue last night, too. On councillor Harvey's motion for... Oh, it's okay. On councillor Harvey's motion for roll call, confirmation by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen. Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
Hello from the last meeting, the mayor's appointment of Graham Markku to the Conservation Commission. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Is this the reappointment or is this the appointment? Councillor Harvey, I'm not sure if he's available or not. You want to suspend the rules to allow him to speak? I'm not sure if he's in the audience or not.
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow him to speak.
Councillor Harvey moves to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Graham to speak. Seeing no objection, Mr. Graham.
President Hapworth, he's on Zoom.
You can unmute yourself, Mr. Markku, please.
Mr. Markku, you should be able to speak right now if you unmute.
I'm sorry, Mr. Markku.
It's like he's unmuted. Should be able to speak right now, Mr. Markku, if you want to try. Oh, we appreciate your service, Mr. Markku. We're going to move along here. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of Merrill Schultz of 40 Summer Street to the Sustainability, Energy and Resiliency Committee with a term to expire September 9th, 2027.
Councillor Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be held under the rules by roll call vote.
Councillor Marcello moves this be held under the rules by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis. Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
Appointment of Merrill Schultz to Sustainability, Energy and Resiliency Committee to be held under the rules. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. The matter is held under the rules. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of Brian Apito of 11 Cleveland Road to the Public Art Commission with a term to expire September 9th, 2026.
Councillor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that to be held under the rules by roll call vote.
Councillor Varela moves to be held under the rules by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
Appointment of Brian Apito to the Public Arts Commission be held under the rules. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. Matter is held under the rules. Further appointments or appointments.
With the mayor's reappointment of the following three people to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Councillor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that to be held under the rules by roll call vote.
Councillor Varela moves to be held under the rules by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
On the reappointment of Stephen Larrick and Ellen Simpson, Nina Viadin to the Zoning Board of Appeals be held under the rules. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's reappointment of the following same residents to the Cultural Council for the term set forth below.
Councillor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be received and filed by roll call vote.
Councillor Varela moves to be received and filed by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
Sorry. Go ahead, Councillor Watsonfeld, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. And Councillor Hapworth.
On the reappointment of April McLean, Cassandra Warren, and Darren Marazo to the Cultural Council to be received and filed, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Communications from the mayor.
We've in order that the total sum of $180,761.32 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Lead Buyback account for the following employees.
Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection, Councillor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councillor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion?
These are contractual obligations, and we thank all of them for their service to our engineering and police departments and our schools.
Any further discussion? Councillor Marcello.
Thank you, President. I just want to mention by name Pat Barton, who happened to be my son's third grade teacher the first year that the Nathaniel Baudich School was opened, and so I just want to wish her a very happy retirement.
Councillor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. While we're on this topic, I just wanted to say a great thank you to Cindy Hatcher. Not only she taught many of, both of my three, two of my three kids, it just shows the dedication of our departments and the employees in them, how they decayed in Salem. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
On the order of the $180,761.32 from the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Lead Buyback, Michelle Krips, Keith Riordan, Ellen Mandell, Steiner, Patricia Barton, Cynthia Hatcher, Paula Geis, and Melinda Marina, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've in order that the sum of $91,000 is hereby appropriated within the Capital Outlay Account to support the completion of Phase 2 golf cart paths and irrigation project.
Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection, Councillor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councillor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you. This is part of the continuing and expanding work for the Phase 1 project, and it's the final phase for the cart paths.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
Arm workout tonight, Eileen.
Yeah.
On the order of $91,000 capital outlay completion of the Phase 2 golf course path and irrigation project, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've in order that the sum is $26,000 is hereby transferred and appropriated from the Receipts Reserve Funds listed below to the DPS burial account.
Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection, Councillor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councillor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you. This request is from DPS for funds to be transferred to replenish the funds used for burial services and daily operations for Green Lawn Cemetery.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth, I mean, sorry, Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
Yes.
No matter what I do.
Order the $26,000 from the Receipts Reserve DPS burial account. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've in order per Master in Law Chapter 44, Section 64, which allows municipalities to pay for prior fiscal year invoices using current fiscal year appropriations by a two-thirds vote of the council, pre-press the sum of $1,620 of outstanding fiscal year 24 invoices to be allowed to be paid from the fiscal year 25 Department of Public Services budget.
Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection, Councillor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption by roll call vote, and as stated, two-thirds required.
Councillor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you. This money is owed to People GIS. They are a vendor we use for snow operations, and the vendor had been sending invoices to our former city data management analyst email, and he did not mail a copy to the city and didn't inquire about payment. DPS has since clarified with them about how invoices should be sent and given them multiple contacts that should be included when they're sent, and I'm requesting it be approved because they are owed the money.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Marcello.
Yes.
Councillor Prozyniewski.
Yes.
Councillor Stark.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And Councillor Hapworth.
National Law, Section Sixty-four, pay to pay last year's invoice or this year's funds. DPS Snow Miscellaneous Supplies, one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. We have eleven counselors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order to accept the donation from Richard Kozinewski to the amount of, in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars for a Salem Common Bench to the Park and Rec Department.
Counselor Prozynski, do you want to correct pronunciation on that?
Sorry?
Was in.
Richard Kozinewski.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
I was also going to ask Counselor Prozynski to assist in my thanking Mr. Kozinewski for his generosity.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stark.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hathworth.
Yes. Donation from Richard Kozinewski of three thousand five hundred dollars to Salem Common Bench to the Park and Rec Department. We have eleven counselors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order to accept the donation from Donna Marcott in the amount of twelve hundred dollars for a bench donation to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you again. We want to thank Ms. Mercotti for her generosity, and these benches are something we all enjoy. It's appreciated.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stark.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hathworth.
Yes. Order to accept the donation from Donna Marcott for one thousand two hundred dollars for a bench to the Park and Rec Department. We have eleven counselors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an ordinance relative to changing the name of the Data Processing Department.
Counselor Morcello.
Thank you, President. In the year two.
We have the reading. Seeing no objection, under discussion, or.
I.
Continue.
Hold on. I move for adoption for first passage by roll.
Counselor Morcello moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President. So this is just updating the language, and if anyone looked, you'll see that it was from nineteen seventy-three, which sent me on a whole thing in my brain trying to imagine which room in City Hall was set up for this very large computer, because back then it was probably filling up most of the room, and it's just, I just can't believe it's still the same language since nineteen seventy-three. So this is just changing the, the name of the department, pulling it out of purchasing, I think it's purchasing, wait a minute, it was under the Treasurer's Department, the IT Department, still. So it's making it its own department. It's calling it the, the, what are we calling it? The Technology and Innovation Department, which makes a lot more sense. You know, the old language is, is down to one paragraph now from about five. So I think it's, it's about time we update how we talk about software and computer use in the, in the city.
Did you ever find out where that was put?
You seem to know.
I wonder if John Giardi would. Okay.
Wow, yeah.
Salem Green for those at home.
There were.
Thank you.
Punch cards in use, though.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stark.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hathworth.
Yes. Ordinance relatives to name change of the Data Processing Department to Technology Innovation First Passage. We have eleven counselors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Can't read the words, I'm sorry. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that there be established a Salem City Seal Task Force.
Counselor Varela.
City of Salem, September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, ordered that the task force shall consist of eleven members, five Salem residents, and at least two of whom are members of the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community, and one who is under the age of eighteen, nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, two credentialed historians nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, a designee of the Race Equity Commission selected by that commission's membership, a designee of the city council selected by that council's membership, a member of the Public Art Commission selected by the commission's membership, and a designee of the mayor. And the task force shall elect from a mayor's membership a chair to run the meetings and a vice chair to run the meetings in the absence of the chair. Within eighteen months of its formation, the task force shall prepare a final report based on historical research, design input, and public feedback, and deliver such report to both city council and the mayor. And I move that this be referred to the Committee on Government Services by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves to refer to the Committee on Government Services by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hathworth. So I know we've been getting emails about this, and just wanted to let the public know that this has been prompted by residents of Salem, not necessarily our city government. So with this, we have a lot to discuss with our city seal. I understand that we do have a rich history here in Salem, and, you know, our heritage is our heritage, what we have here today, but you know what? Semantics change, things can change. So I think this is a benefit for our city to look into what might be offensive to our AAPI community here in Salem, which was not really a presence back many years ago in the eighteen hundreds, even like the early nineteen hundreds. I wanted to quote one of our residents here, Flora Taunt, that had really stuck with me, and one of the things that Flora said was stereotypical, stereotypical portrayals are harmful as they reinforce a misrepresentation of the past, which was seen through the lens of a dominant race from their position of power, many of whom look down on the other races, and subhumans conquer and enslave, i.e. Native American and African Americans. I think it's important because we need to have these discussions, especially in the city of Salem. And as Flora also quoted as well, sorry, Flora, you know, Destination Salem's tagline says, "We're still making history." I really believe that looking into changing our city seal is a benefit to our city and not necessarily stripping away what has been brought up in the past. Thank you.
Counselor Morcello.
Thank you, President. I just want to back up a little bit in the order and the text for the order, just to underscore some, some language there. It says, "The purpose of the task force is to engage in research, community conversations, and design and historical review for the purposes of evaluating the city of Salem's seal and developing recommendations for potential modifications to said seal." But the important, the most important part there is the community conversations. If we don't have, if we don't have community buy-in, then it's hard for this to move forward. That is a very, very important part of this task force group. And my only question to Counselor Varela is, if this goes to committee, what work needs to be done on this order before a task force is started?
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hathworth. So concerning a change of the seal here, this has to be done by ordinance. So we do have an ordinance requiring a change, which will have to go through city council. So the reason I really want to have that first meeting is to set up the procedural, how we're going to do this. So even though we're going to have a task force, ultimately, it's going to come down to the city council voting to change the seal. So with that, I think we need to have an additional meeting, an, an, an initial meeting, just to bind clarity for the public and counselors and the, and just everyone involved in this conversation, how this is going to take place and how it can actually become a change.
So we are, I'll just, just add, just for clarity, we are free to send this to committee, and we certainly can. I believe the way this would happen is that this would go to the, if this task force were created, whatever they recommend will come back to the council. We will vote on it here. There will be more opportunity for public comment. I believe it would need to go as a home rule petition. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe it does need to go to, does it not need to go to the state? Maybe we need clarity on that, but.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I've been talking to our city solicitor about this. I do not believe it needs a home rule petition at all, but we'll get clarity on that as well.
By the way, it would, it would come back to the council. So this, and this wouldn't be something where we're voting on it tonight, and it's, and it's going to happen. It's something that would, the recommendation would come back to the council, and then potentially could go into committee, and there could be more discussion on, on the recommendation that was made. But the, the, the motion on the floor is to send this to committee. I think there was another hand up. Counselor Stark.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I just had a similar question to, to the Chair of the Government Services Committee, the, the need for this to go to committee. I mean, I believe there is another order within the committee that if you wanted to, to meet and have the conversation, but I would love to see the ball started on this task force and to not hold it or delay it and to let, because our, our body as a council is not going to be the one that is running this task force and managing it going forward. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to just vote on this this evening with knowing that there is that additional item in committee that if we wanted to have a, a conversation, we, we more than can, but that's been in committee all summer. The second point that I wanted to ask is, is just about the makeup of the committee. I did look to see, you know, it does say on our webpage that in eighteen thirty-nine, it was an ordinance that adopted our city seal passed by council. So I believe it seems just a cursory review that that would be all that's needed. The second part, though, that it says on our website is that the city clerk is the custodian of the city seal, and only official documents of the city of Salem may contain the city seal, and that the, the city clerk manages that process. So I was wondering if, I, I know there's that line in there that says, "A designee of the city council selected by that council's membership for someone to join that task force." I would like it to be open that maybe if the clerk was amenable to that, have that designee be the city clerk, or we have, we make a modification to also include the city clerk on this task force. I think that might be an important amendment, but I wanted to, before I put a motion in or a request to amend, that we had a conversation around that.
Counselor Prozynski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with Counselor Varela on having this referred to the Committee on Government Services. This is obviously going to be a very controversial issue. It's something that we should take our time with, and most importantly, as Counselor Morcello said, we should give the public every opportunity to voice their opinion or to have their input. I was glad to hear from Mr. Whittier today on his perspective. I was glad to hear from Mr. Corley on his perspective of this, and I would like to hear more from other people that have opinions or passions on this issue. We're not in a hurry to do this, so let's take this step by step. We start out by having a meeting with the Committee on Government Services, allowing what I hope is a robust input from our residents, and we can discuss on the appointment of those eleven members, because that has to be carefully scrutinized also. So I'm in, I'm in favor of sending this to Government Services. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I just want to offer my opinion that I'm glad to see this in front of us tonight, you know, continuing our efforts to learn from our history, and as the email we received from Flora was well-written, and being mindful of the stereotypical portrayals being harmful. And I also just want to express that I don't believe continuing to learn from our history is dishonoring, and I think our history, as our history continues, which she also said, we continue to make history, and I believe we still have that responsibility. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hathworth. I personally would be okay voting to set up the task force today, but obviously, that's the will of the committee. So I worked for the city for three years, and as a city counselor and chair of two boards for sixteen years, I have seen the seal come in front of me probably a few thousand times, and my ignorance, I didn't really know what was on the seal. And, you know, at the flag raising, the AAPI flag raising, several people from our community, we have a very small but very diverse AAPI community. There are people from countries that many of us may not even be aware of. And I've learned about, you know, from my time running the No Place for Hate Committee, that appropriating to other people for standing up and saying that we know what's best, and not sometimes listening to how, you know, certain communities may be affected by actions that we think are innocent. You know, we've had issues in the city and in the state when we've put human rights on a ballot. So I do think it's instructive to have a task force, and I just got a couple more thoughts. One is, change is not context. It's not an erasure of history. It is part of history. For people who don't know the long history of the swastika, it was originally a positive symbol that meant well-being. And in the United States, it was actually used on products like Coca-Cola, and the Boston Braves baseball team in nineteen fourteen put it on their hat when they played the Brooklyn Dodgers. But Adolf Hitler adopted it as a symbol for the Nazi party, and now, you know, a lot of people in the world identify it as a symbol of hate. And so people wouldn't necessarily use that symbol anymore to project a positive view of, of what they do or what their products are. I just want to end by saying that we can't be afraid of history. Learning truth makes us all better. And, you know, there's a misconception, and I want to say this, you know, because I want to directly address Mr. Whittier's comments. The idea that someone would say that something isn't racist without being part of a potentially affected community is offensive to me. You know, I was a political science and American history major at UMass, and I never knew about the Tulsa massacre, and it only really came to light a few years ago. And it doesn't diminish our country to recognize the things that have happened that we can learn from and do better. Thank you.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you for letting me speak one more time, Counselor President Hathworth. Just so, I, I understand some of my colleagues, as far as wanting to just pass this tonight, I do want to be mindful about this conversation. We do have an order in right now in committee to discuss this as well. So I'm going to be prompt on scheduling a meeting. So I think it's really important that we really be thoughtful about the conversation and how we start the conversation. So going to committee, I think, is appropriate, but I will not hold this up. This, I'll have a meeting promptly to really make this happen.
Counselor Prozynski, could you?
Counselor Hathworth.
Thank you, Counselor President Prozynski. I just want to say real quick, I think history can be difficult, and it can be a situation, what we saw with the, with the indigenous land acknowledgement, that it can be something where we sort of all need to shut off our, our egos and our understanding of what we thought we knew about this, sort of listen and learn, and be, be open to, to different perspectives. The city seal represents a part of our history that we should be very, very proud of, which is that Salem looked out to the rest of the world. Salem was situated in the spot where it looked out at the rest of the world, and often, the rest of the world interacted with Americans for the first time by Salem merchants who came over there and did business with them. I think that's something we should be proud of. There are parts of our, of our history that we need to learn more about. We have to understand Salem's role in the Triangle Trade. We have to understand that the depiction of the individual on that seal was a caricature of what Salemites in eighteen thirty-eight imagined somewhere from that part of the world looked like. And today, someone looking at that has a different perspective than a typical Salemite would then. But it is a long process, and it is something that we need to be open and vulnerable about. And I think that the idea to put this into committee, I am also ready to, to send this to a task force today, because I feel comfortable with the logic behind this and where we need to go with this. But I don't think everybody in the community is. I think it's a smart thing for us to take it to the committee where the person who brought this order forward is chairing that committee, and have a conversation about it. But appreciate everyone's conversation on this. We have a motion on the floor to send this to Government Services. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Can I get a clarification from the president before I vote? I, I would like to suggest to the Ward Seven Counselor that he change this to move to adoption. And the clarification is this, we already have an order to discuss the seal in Government Services. So I don't know why we can't create the task force, get that started, and if the Government Services Committee meets, that can be another hearing. I don't know why, why these are exclusive. So I'm going to ask that the Ward Seven Counselor changes and to move adoption by roll call vote.
You have a motion on the floor right now. Is there any further discussion on that?
Well, I'm going to move to, to amend it, to, to adopt it by roll call vote.
Motion on the floor is to send a committee, which would take precedence over adoption. Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hathworth. Don't you think we should give the public, public opinion on how the task force is put together? Maybe they want other people on the task force to decide. Want to add people or another group of people? Should go into committee where the public has rights to talk about.
The motion on the floor is to send a committee at this time. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stark.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hathworth.
Yes.
Motion to, for the order to establish a Salem City Seal Task Force, motion to refer to Government Services. We have eleven counselors voting, one present, ten in favor, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor? Sorry, Mayor's Informational Page, none. Motions, Orders, and Resolutions. Counselor Stark.
Thank you, President Hathworth. City of Salem, September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and City Council, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter Forty-two, Section Fifty-B, Handicap Zones Limited Time, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section one, Section Fifty-B, Handicap Zones Limited Time, shall be amended by repealing the following. North Street, one handicap parking space to be repealed in front of one oh nine North Street for a distance of twenty feet. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Stark moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hathworth. This handicap spot is no longer needed. As noted, the Lieutenant Tucker's police recommendation is included in the backup.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozynski.
Yes.
Counselor Stark.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hathworth.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance to amend ordinance, traffic's Chapter 42, Section 50B, repealing North Street number 109. We have, for first pass, I'm sorry, yeah, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Did I grab another one ears here? No, I got it, sorry.
Think so.
Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Verola.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem, September 12th, in the year 2024, an ordinance to amend an ordinance related to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, shall be amended by adding the following. Jefferson Avenue, one handicap parking space to be added to the front of number 33, 336 Jefferson Avenue for a distance of 20 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall be take effect by, provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Verola moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So this was prompted by Lieutenant Tucker and specifically Mr. Martin O, who lives in front of his home. He has had a little more mobility issues than he anticipated. So he's requesting a handicap spot in front of his space, and I say we're all for it. I'm glad that our parking department jumped on this within a week. So thank you to everybody for making this happen.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Ordinance to amend ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap parking, Jefferson Ave., number 336, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City Council, City of Salem, in the year 2024, an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zones, limited time, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, 50B, handicap zones, limited time, shall be amended by adding the following. Broadway, one handicap parking space to be added in front of number 95 Broadway for a distance of 20 feet. Section 2, this ordinance should take effect as provided by city charter, and I move that this is adopted for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Cohen moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So a resident moved into this address. There is a driveway, however, according to Lieutenant Tucker, all the spaces in the driveway, so they don't do tandem parking, have already been secured by other people who live in the building. And it's also not as accessible as the spot in front of the house would be.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Ordinance to amend ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, handicap zones, Broadway number 95, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, President Hapworth. In the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs, be amended by adding the following. Pioneer Circle, obedience to isolated stop signs, northwesterly bound traffic on Pioneer Circle at Puritan Road, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Harvey moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs at Pioneer Circle and Puritan Road, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Stott.
City of Salem and City Council, September 12th, in the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs, be amended by adding the following. Oak Street, obedience to isolated stop signs, eastbound traffic on Oak Street at Flint Street. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Stott moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. There's always been a stop bar line here at Oak Street at Flynn. There was just, the stop sign seemed to have gone missing and not in the ordinance. So the traffic department did review and the stop sign is required. So we're putting that fully back in. I'd also like to thank Lieutenant Tucker and the traffic department for all of their catch-up work that we're doing right now from the summer. And I will note that the traffic lieutenant's recommendation is in backup documentation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
I'm sorry. One more time?
Yes, yes.
I hit it too fast. Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 49, obedience to isolated stop signs. Oak Street at Flint Street, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. In the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Section 75 of Article V dash A be amended by inserting the following. Derby Street Parking Prohibish, prohibit, let's say that word, on tow zone, number 222 Derby Street, to be included to obtain resident parking permits, but no visitor passes shall be issued. This ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. I move for adoption by first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Jerslow moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion?
Yes, thank you, President Hapworth. Right now, at 222 Derby Street, it houses two businesses and two residents. I've been working with the residents, especially Mike McGee at the Parking Commission, and also Dave Kachaski of the Parking Department. There's meet at parking in front of the residents now, and this will enable the residents to park on the side streets under the resident parking if they needed it, it's needed.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry, President Hapworth, I had.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Present.
Present?
That's correct.
Thank you. And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Ordinance relative to traffic, Section 75, Article something, Derby Street Parking Prohibition and Tow Zone, number 222 Derby Street, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, I'm sorry, 10 in favor, one present, the matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem, City Council, in the year 2024, an ordinance relative to traffic be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows.
Counselor Verola moves to waive the reading, seeing no objection, Counselor Cohen.
Oh, thank you.
Just want to make her motion.
Yeah, I want to move that this is adopted for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Cohen moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion?
I was all excited to read the whole thing. So Naples Road is part of the Osgood neighborhood, which includes Savoy and Hemingway. And this is kind of a unique, not a unique issue, this is something that's come up before, where sometimes the ordinances don't reflect the signage or vice versa. This is a street that's directly across from Salem State. There've been issues where a lot of people parking, you know, where people don't want to see cars or whatever. And the signage actually reflects what's in this ordinance change, which is that the north side has no parking at all, and the south side, there's no parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I've had several meetings with the Transportation Department. Matter of fact, Counselor Prozinski joined me on one recently. And we decided to defer to the residents of that street and neighborhood. And the Transportation Department really did a good job of sending out a letter with three options, and each one of those options dictated exactly what would happen. There's still a little confusion as I have sent this ordinance change to the residents, but I'm working with the Transportation Department to resolve any confusion. In the meantime, Hemingway and Savoy, Savoy has the same signage, and that was before the Transportation Commission last night, and as well as no parking in a tow area on Hemingway. And so those will come in front of the council as well. So this was a survey that went to the residents. The overwhelming consensus was to keep it as the signage is, which is in the ordinance change, and there's backup documents to that effect. And so I do recommend that we adopt this.
Counselor Cohen, I'm sorry, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Ordinance relative to traffic, Section 51, Article 5, repeal, Naples Road, Section 74, Article 5A, Section 51B, Article 5, for first passage, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Committee reports, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem and City Council, September 12th, 2024. The Committee on Public Health, Safety, and Environment co-posted the Committee of the Whole to whom was referred the matter of ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to Chapter 2, Section 705, Certificate of Fitness, and has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
On acceptance of the report, all is in favor? Any opposed? Court is accepted? Acceptance of the report, Madam City Clerk, please call.
I did raise my hand.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. In Public Health, Safety, and Environment, ordinance to amend ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 705, Certificate of Fitness, adoption for first passage, acceptance of the report. We have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. On the adoption, under discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. So during this meeting, all members of Public Health, Safety, and Environment were present, as were Counselors Merkel, Stott, Davis, and Harvey from the Committee of the Whole. We started off with the presentation by Health Agent Greenbaum. There's really two components of this change. One is that inspections of rental units would happen every three years, and the other would be to include two and three family owner occupied and non-owner occupied dwellings, which were not part of the inspection process. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board had allocated $100,000 from ARPA money that they were allocated by the City Council, and that was used to hire an additional inspector to be dedicated to inspecting properties as one of the top priorities of the housing roadmap is to do a rental registry. And since March, just starting A and E properties on A and E addresses that were not inspected in the last three years, we have an increase of 250%. So it's really enabling the city to move forward significantly. I know my opinion changed after I met individually with Health Agent Greenbaum. We had a really good discussion. And one of the things that came up from the public and in our meeting was, should we have duplication when HUD properties, voucher properties are inspected? And one of the things that we found a consensus with is that it's really important to guarantee safety of all apartments. And the inspection process is not just to develop a registry and to track information, but to make sure that properties that, all the properties in Salem that have tenants are as safe as possible. And so we voted unanimously in the committee to refer to the full council.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
Yes. Committee report, Public Health, Safety, and the Environment, Chapter 2, Section 705, Certificate of Fitness, ordinance to amend an ordinance, adoption for first passage, accepting the recommendation, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries.
Further committee reports, Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Salem and City Council, September 12th, 2024, the Committee of the Whole to whom was referred, the matter of reappointment of Salem City Clerk Eileen Simons, with a term to expire June 28, 2027, has considered said matter and would recommend to leave in committee and hold the appointment until the first meeting of February 2025 with five specific goals.
On the acceptance of the report, any discussion? Yes, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masilo.
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
On the acceptance of the report, orders 11 to nothing in favor. Counselor Hapworth.
Further discussion, we have had a thoughtful meeting last night. We came up with five specific goals. I'll just read them off here. Technology adoption, agenda management, implement agenda management software for more efficient meeting organization and public transparency, including but not limited to training of councillors, department heads, mayor's staff and IT. Work with IT to understand who is responsible for supportive software and where questions should be directed. Provide department heads, mayor's office and councillors with a process for submitting city council agenda items with the goal of being fully transitioned to new agenda software by first meeting of February 2025. Public document accessibility. The goal is to improve public access to official documents to consistent use of SharePoint, the measure being ensure all newly issued documents and meeting materials are uploaded to SharePoint within 48 hours of creation. The clerk should collaborate with other departments to ensure best practices are implemented here. Customer service enhancement goal. Establish customer service standards for public interactions or communicate any existing customer service standards. This is if the mayor has one that we discussed earlier, if the mayor has a customer service standard that is applicable to all city departments. And to develop a customer service policy in consultation with city officials, the DEI Director and staff of the clerk's office, and communicate this plan to all members of the clerk's office. Again, if there's already a standard in place for the entire city, just communicating that out to the members of the clerk's office is what we're looking for. Measure, hold bi-monthly training sessions for staff to ensure these standards are understood and followed. For diversity, equity, inclusion, integration, integrate DEI principles into the office's operations and collaborate with city's DEI Director regularly, with the measure being to meet with the DEI Director by the first meeting of February 2025, to outline collaborative goals for the office. And then the fifth one is collaboration with the mayor's staff with the goal of fostering a productive working relationship with all city departments, and to schedule a bi-weekly sync with the chief of staff to discuss issues and process and reporting to the council the status of these meetings by the first meeting of February 2025. And just want to appreciate the city clerk for her hard work over these last three years, and appreciate her willingness to discuss these goals with us.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jerslow?
Thank you, President Proznowski. I just had one thing to mention, the five goals that we stated. Nobody asked the city clerk, myself included, if she felt she had enough staff to actually obtain those goals, enough time in her daily schedule to do all that, added to her normal duties every day, in the day and note. So I'm wondering if does she need more help, more staff, maybe a part-time person to obtain these goals? And nobody asked myself included, and I think that should have been asked last night of the city clerk, of all the time that she has in the day to do all those duties that she does now, but now add five more duties to her plate.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? So I have, take the. Okay. I.
Did the acceptance.
I'm still in the discussion, I would like to say a few words. Yeah, exactly.
Counselor Proznowski.
Thank you. Not that it's vitally important, but I know that we've added a lot to the plate of the clerk to make us all better and better engaging and better engaging amongst ourselves and the public. I know a lot of the important part of it is the new software technological aspect of it, which I am looking forward myself to fine tuning so that I can be proficient at it. I just think it's going to take a lot of time, and I think that's probably the biggest priority, if I remember from our committee meeting. I just don't, I'm not sure about setting a timeline. I would just hope, and this is only a comment, is that I would hope that the council would not hold a deadline of February 1st on every single one of these things. If there are accomplishments made on the most important, maybe the first two, then we can move forward with that. But I'm looking forward to this, us all working as a team to make it work better for us and for the residents of the city. Thank you.
Thanks so much, though.
A little new. On the acceptance of the report, adoption by roll call vote of the, for the committee, Madam Clerk, please, on the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Present.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
On the adoption by roll call vote, we have 11 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, none in the negative, no one absent, one in present. Or, the order carries.
Communications from city officials.
With the following preservation restriction agreement submitted by Patricia Keller, her preservation planner and J and A Guide Assistant Community Development Director, Department of Planning and Community Development for the House of Seven Gables, Teahouse and Barn as a condition of the CPA funding.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you. This is for a preservation restriction agreement between the House of the Seven Gables and the City of Salem through the Salem Historical Commission. There's a lot of info about this in the backup documentation, actually 48 pages, starting on page 83. The House of the Seven Gables was already approved for CPA funds and required under CPA rule, any private property receiving CPA funds needs a preservation restriction agreement. And this is done, I just found some of the backup documentation interesting, this is done to ensure the public benefit for use of these funds. And also, this is a long process, if you look at it, and it's already gone through the state, and the council approval is actually one of the last steps in this process. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes. Preservation restriction agreement submitted by Patricia Keller, her preservation planner for the House of Seven Gables, Teahouse and Barn. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Petitions.
The petition from National Grid to install two jointly owned poles on Almira Street at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Almira Street.
Hearing ordered September 26, 2024. Further petitions?
We have petition from National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Margin Street at the intersection of Summer Street and Margin Street.
Hearing ordered September 26, 2024. Further petitions?
We request from BNS Fitness to hold a road race, wicked half marathon in Uso City Streets on September 22, 2024.
Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move it granted by roll call vote.
Counselor Jerslow moves to be granted by roll call vote, under discussion?
Discussion, they've been holding this race for a long time, maybe a bit, worked with the police department. I ran this like 15 years ago, so, good race. Thank you.
It is a good race, that round as well. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Petition from BNS Fitness for road race, wicked half marathon, September 22, 2024. Move to be granted. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further petitions?
We have request from Salem Common Neighborhood Association to hold Kids Fun Fest on the Salem Common on October 19, 2026 and 27, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Counselor Watson felt. She knows. Counselor Watson felt is frozen, I believe.
Thank you, Counselor President Hapworth. I move this be granted by roll call vote.
Breaking up right now, Counselor Watson felt. Counselor Varela, could you take that one?
I am.
Yes, thank you, President Hapworth.
Not frozen on my side.
Be granted by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves to be granted by roll call vote. Any discussion?
No discussion, just thank you for the fun fest and the kids and looking forward to it.
Counselor Watson felt, are you able to make any discussion? I see none.
I can, yeah, I just, can you hear me? Okay, you all are not frozen on my side in any way, shape or form. Just again, thank you to the Salem Common Neighborhood Association for this wonderful annual event, this family-friendly thing for the kids to do during the month of October and beautiful Salem Common. As always, you know, we look to the city and also to all of our vendors to just take care of our special space and otherwise, hope everyone has a great and safe time. Thanks.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes. Seeing a Fun Kids Fun Fest Salem Common, October 19, 20, 20th, 26th and 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Move this be granted. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further petitions?
We have a block party request on Fowler Street to hold a block party on October 6, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and a request from the residents on Boardman Street, between Webb Street and Emerson Street, to hold a block party on September 28, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., rain date of September 29, 2024.
Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, President. I move this to be granted by roll call vote.
Counselor Morsello moves to be granted by roll call vote. Any discussion?
I just wish them sunny skies.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes. The petition for the block parties on Fowler Street and Boardman Street on 10-6 and 9-28 be granted. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. I think we may have some public guides on the list here tonight.
Yep, we have.
Further petitions? Further petitions? List of public guides. Scroll down, Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be granted as amended by roll call vote.
Counselor Morsello moves to be granted as amended by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this, if you took the time to count, is somewhere around 76 new tour guides coming into Salem. It needs to be amended, though, because, as you can imagine, with this kind of paperwork, a couple of papers got into the wrong pile. So we need to make five additions. Shreya Kelly from 4A Stevens Street in Peabody, Susan Zalkin from 1 Harbor Street in Salem, Michael Robert Bassett, 248 Greenfield and Col, Greenfield Colrain Mass, Bianca Wade, 8 Morgan Street in Lynn, and Dean Abbott at 26 Clark Street in Salem. In addition, we need to remove one of the people about halfway down the list on the first page, Lauren Rizzo, and we'll take her up in the next, the next item. I do want to point out that when tour guides put in their application, they pay a $10 fee currently, because the ordinance goes into effect next year. They do have to have a Corey check, and they also have to be checked out by the collection collector's office to make sure that they don't have any outstanding fines or fees. And only when all of that is done do they get put in our list to be approved. So like I said, this is a list of 76 new tour guides, which brings the total this year of approved tour guides to 286. And I will say that this certainly underscores the fact that we need more enforcement, and I think is why we have the new ordinance coming into effect next year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, move this be granted as amended, as amended, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes. On the lot of, on the list of 74 public guides, plus five that were missed, as amended, be granted and remove Lauren Rizzo from list. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further petitions?
We have one public guide license to be denied.
Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that this be denied by roll call vote.
Counselor Morsello moves to be denied by roll call vote. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes. All the guides denial, Lauren Rizzo. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further petitions?
We have seven claims.
Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs by roll call vote.
Counselor Morsello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs by roll call vote. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watson, sorry, felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Seven claims for Bridget Connors, Lefania Carazo, Brian Hennessy, Monica McNeil, Sarah Herr, Wayne Compton, Nicholas Burse, be returned to Ola. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Note that Counselor Varela is recusing himself. Unfinished business.
We have the second passage of zoning or intermending zoning relative to business neighborhood zoning, Section 3.1, Table of Principal and Accessory Use Regulations.
Counselor Morsello.
Thank you, President. I move for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Morsello moves for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote. Any discussion?
No discussions.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Masillo?
Yes.
Counselor Proznowski?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor, oh, sorry. Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes. Second passage of zoning ordinance amending zoning relative to business neighborhood zoning, Section 3.1, Table of Principal and Accessory Use Regulations. We have 10 councillors